Which was I.
Oh, I know, that's just the real deal. Oh, I put it in the. You got a deed, a bill for a deed to the county. It's for that.
They doesn't say anything on it, ever.
Me too.
So what's is happening? Yeah, no big one, no big one.
I think he's, did he say he's gonna do it?
He started it himself, yeah, and and didn't.
Is it not?
He odd, Matt started it.
Okay, all right, so maybe, maybe he did get you eating. Call this first session of the Dell Rapids City Council in the year 2020 to order. Welcome to all those attending this evening and welcome to those who might be watching us via the webcam. Appreciate your interest in local government at this time. We'll ask the finance officer, please call roll.
Up.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Forcher.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Burke.
Here.
Ron Doggett.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Mary Early.
Here, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Have an agenda for this evening's meeting, I guess. Make note that the, under all business, transportation master plan presentation won't be taking place tonight. That's gonna be at our next meeting. He's, Mr. Klein is incapacitated, so he won't be coming. So other than that, that's the only difference in the agenda, so.
So moved.
Moved by Bob to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barry, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All nay, motions carry. Next is approval of minutes from the regular meeting last December sixteenth. Moved by Chad to approve the December sixteen minutes, is there a second?
All second now.
Seconded by Mike, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All nay, motions carry. Next is the time for any visitors to be heard, but I don't think we have any visitors here that are not on the agenda, so we will move on. Next is public hearing and the EPA award, and Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
Tonight, we have representatives from the D E N R that are here to present the city with the EPA. How do I pronounce it? Pisces. Pisces Award, okay, of excellence that the city received. We explained this to the council here the last few months. Proud of receiving this award, I guess, thanks to the council for making the move in this direction to construct this wastewater facility. The D G R for their, for their leadership in the design and construction oversight of the facility. And then our city staff now who are implementing and operating this facility on a daily basis. So I guess with that, Andy, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Take over.
Just say a few words, I guess.
And.
That's okay.
Sure you introduce yourself.
All right, my name is Andy Brols, I'm with South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. I'm the engineering manager for the program. With me is Jim Anderson, he was our project engineer for the project and oversaw it day to day as things went along. I'd just like to thank you, Mayor Early and council members, for allowing us to come this evening. In May of 2019, EPA sent out a nomination form for their Clean Water State Revolving Fund projects for the Pisces Award, which stands for performance and innovation in the S R F, creating environmental success. I can see why they went to Pisces because the rest is pretty long. After we reviewed the award criteria and kind of took a look through our projects, we thought the Dell Rapids project was really a good example of what they were looking for in qualifications. We worked with Justin, along with D G R staff, to prepare nomination form and submitted that to EPA in July. I think most of you know the background that the existing plant, the ponds, were having trouble both with polium and treatment limits. And so, along with future growth and wanting to come into compliance, the city looked for a long-term solution and ended on constructing a new mechanical wastewater treatment plant. Little funding history, I mean, we're now into 2020, barely, and this loan was originally funded in March of 2016. The city received a $2,386,000 clean water S R F loan, as well as $3,372,000 in grants through our Board of Water and Natural Resources to construct the facility. The new facility was designed to accommodate growth for anticipated 20 years and meet current and future discharge limits. Construction began in April of seventeen, and the plant was completed and operational, I believe, in August of 2018. Took very minimal time to come up online, which is somewhat rare for a mechanical plant, thanks to somewhat forward thinking by, I think, D G R and the city, working with the city of Sioux Falls to get some criteria seating, to bring things into compliance and be able to start treating and discharging wastewater very quickly. In November of 2019, D N R staff was presented the Pisces Award on behalf of the city of Dell Rapids for this exceptional project. The Pisces program is to nationally recognize exceptional projects for water quality improvements, protection of public health, economic benefits, sustainability or innovation. This project is one of only 13 projects that was recognized nationwide. For, I'd just like to again thank Mayor Early, Justin and Claire and other city staff for being excellent partners all along on this project. Made things go very smoothly and we've worked with you on several other projects along the way and it's been a great relationship. Also like to thank D G R Engineering for helping out and doing all their work on it. Wouldn't have gone smoothly without them, along with the Southeastern Council Government Staff. They were very important to making sure everything stayed on track. Really appreciate working with all the partners involved, so. With that, I would like to congratulate the city of Dell Rapids and on behalf of South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources and the United States Environmental Protection Agency, we present an award plaque to the city. One other thing I would like to note, EPA put together a pamphlet with all of the projects and Dell Rapids made the cover page for all of, I think there were 25 or 30 projects somewhere in that neighborhood that were nominated nationwide and they chose the photo of the Dell Rapids plant as the cover page. So I thought that actually was maybe almost the most meaningful of the whole deal, just that of everybody, that was the best ones, so. Thank you, everyone, and.
Well, on behalf of the city, you know, we have, as you stated, we have worked for many, many years on various projects with D E N R and we, on behalf of the citizens of Dell Rapids, appreciate the fact that things would never happen if it wasn't for this partnership and, and the program and availability of loans and grants, et cetera, to, as we, you know, try to continue to make improvements to the community and upgrade infrastructure, which is critical to, to, to life in this community. So, we appreciate the fact that you guys are good to work with, and we work together and we can get things accomplished. And that's, that's a good example to people, so. So I guess at this point.
Can I get a photograph?
We're gonna do the staging of the photograph.
D G R, right, too. Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Somebody wanna hold? This one? That's your guys' picture, I know that, I just took yours, so.
Get everybody else in there and.
Got him over my shoulder?
Oh, Clarence, you're trying to hide. All right, I've got like five of them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin.
Thanks, Jim.
He don't want to take you class.
Somebody needs to have, you guys can, if you guys want a copy of that, too, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have her copy, printed. Yeah, I have the couple for Claire, too, so.
Thank you. If you wanna keep that one.
No, I have one at my.
Maybe we can get postcards made up of that. Okay, again, thanks for being here tonight to do this, we appreciate your being here at the meeting, so. Okay, moving on to new business, resolution 2020 dash one, which is the payroll resolution.
If I could just mention about the transportation plan.
Okay, yeah.
No, that's fine. So, yeah, Wade Klein had a, had a health issue, he was not able to be here tonight. He plans to be at our meeting on Tuesday the 21st. The, the plan is available, it wasn't as of Friday when it was sent out, but it is, it is on, on your novice agenda. I printed off a few copies for those that don't receive, or receive the, the computer version. So it is available to check out. I would, this actually kind of gives us an opportunity to maybe look into it for another two weeks prior to Mr. Klein coming to present to council. You know, it's, I'll just emphasize this, it's an important document that, really hoping that's gonna influence and push for certain capital improvement projects in the, in the next, in the next coming years and help the city prioritize in budget. So, it'd be great if everyone has a chance to take a look at that before he comes, so we can ask questions and, and that type of a thing, so. With that, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Resolution 2020 dash one.
Attached in the packet is 2020 dash one, which is the payroll resolution. In January of every year, the council adopts the, the payroll resolution. This payroll resolution reflects a 2.1% increase for city employees. This is based on the city's pay plan that was adopted in 2004. The 2.1% is based on the November Consumer Price Index. That's what has been used to determine this cost of living increase in the past. With that, there's some historical reference here that in 2017, it was a 1.7% increase. 2018 was a 2.2% increase, so this one in 20, or 2019 was a 2.2% increase as well. So this 2020 would be a 2.1% increase. The, there was not a reflection of increases for the city council or the planning and zoning commission in this, in this payroll resolution.
Entertained motion. So moved by Mark to approve resolution 2020 dash one, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by James. Finance officer, will please call a roll.
Up.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
Forcher.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Ron Doggett.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yeah.
Twenty dash one is fast. Next down the agenda is the garbage haulers licenses for 2020, Justin?
The garbage haulers licenses are approved at the first meeting in January. This is according to ordinance. We have not received all of the applications and all of the necessary paperwork to be able to approve these applications, but I guess we will ask that the council approve these applications contingent upon receiving all of the specific requirements. Those haulers that have been licensed in the past that we have sent renewals to is A O K Sanitary Service, Garbage and More, Novak Sanitary, Van Dyke's, R B S Sanitation, and Volte Sunrise Sanitation. The, the reason we haven't received those is because we require that the city of Sioux Falls, that they show us the city of Sioux Falls registration dumping requirements and the city of Sioux Falls hasn't issued them yet for 2020. We will update the council if we're having an issue with, with receiving anyone's application requirements. So with that, recommend that we approve contingent upon receiving all of those requirements.
Move to approve of the contingencies. Moved by Chad to approve the garbage hauler licenses for 2020 contingent with the haulers providing the appropriate documentation and fees, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, any questions? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All nay, motions carry. Next, it's time to pay, pay the city's bills, claims payable.
So moved.
Moved by Bob to pay the city's bills, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All nay, motions carry. Administrative Finance Offices report.
Very quick meeting tonight without the, the transportation.
Right.
Plan. Traditionally, looking back, the January meetings are relatively short for, for content. I'll give a couple of updates here. The, in this utility bill and attached is a, it's a water and sewer rate explanation that was inserted in this previous bill, it's on, it's on the back page of that insert. We have been receiving multiple calls at City Hall, I'd say a handful plus a day for multiple weeks. You know, our rates went into effect in, I think, January of last year and people just kind of started noticing it towards the end of the year in nineteen. And so, thought it was necessary to kind of lay out and explain specifically what, what these, what the surcharges were related to. That was the main question. I know when we changed some of our billing, the, the bill actually, it just says W surcharge and an amount, W, W, W surcharge and an amount. So there isn't a lot of explanation on the bill. We just don't have space on the, the software that allows for any further explanation. So, thought it was necessary, so put that together to hopefully inform folks of what specifically the surcharges are going towards. So just trying to educate the, the public as to what, what they're paying for. We've had a couple of inquiries wanting some more information, so we'll, we'll be providing that as, as time goes by.
Say, Justin.
Yes.
This was not received on the electronic version of the email or of the bills.
It was not in the electronic version?
Yeah, 'cause that wouldn't go through.
Okay.
Our bill or who sends our bills, that's what, good for them.
Okay, good for them.
Cause when I saw it, I.
Maybe you can get an email list of those that we do that and send all this separate email.
We should.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people get their billing by via email?
Great question.
Well, for sure.
Yeah, I don't.
We should be able to run a report now, I know it's more and more every month.
We would have emails for all of those, because that's how we send them, so we can maybe just send a separate email with the attach.
Yeah.
That's, that's good. Any good? Does it look like this or?
Yeah, no, it looks exactly like your.
Yeah, they look like that when you can see. So it says there's an insert, but there's no. But there's no insert.
I'll, I'll be honest, I did not look through that.
I'll verify, I get, I get the email myself, too, so. Be nice if they could just put a link on there.
Yeah.
Or it would just be a second if you kept scrolling, because you actually, PDF pops up to view it, so if you just scroll down to it. I guess we just have to set it up that way. That's, that's a, that's a good, good catch, thank you, Bill.
Say something, I want to say thank you to Clarence for.
Oh, Clarence, too, for the, for the information regarding the freezing of water lines. Fortunately, we're not having cold streak at this point, knock on fake wood. But we've, we've been fortunate thus far, but just putting that information out there, people that have problems with that, we had a dozen or more last year when we had the cold streak that had freezing issues. So we just wanted to get that information out there. You know, we're telling people what they're, what they're paying for in their water and then telling them to run their water.
Well, I thought that was, you know, you want us to make sure they knew what you're gonna pay for.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can usually work with the folks, I'm not trying to. The flood hazard mitigation buyout property order meeting is scheduled for the Thursday at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. I would say that this is like a working meeting between kind of city staff and C C O G and the property owners, so not necessary for the council to be here, okay? I guess if you want to come listen, that's fine, but it's not, it's, it's not really a question and answer session with these folks. This is more kind of past the question period. I know we're gonna have questions that we'll have to answer, but this is a kind of getting down to the nitty gritty of putting together the applications, because we've got, we've got sixty days to get applications together.
How many people?
I think we're at about nine or ten, but it just depends. I'll know more Thursday, that's what I can tell you.
What's the middle number that made the threshold? Of substantial damage?
Of substantial damage, I have that list in my office, I don't have that right here with me. It was around that eight or nine, I think, I want to say in my head, and then, and then there's, there's like one or two others that didn't meet the substantial that are considering. Also, it's paid. And so, there's different scenarios that people are running. You know, some people, there's been, you know, at least one that's inquiring about potentially picking up the house and moving it. So they would just be paying, paid for the land and then the, the moving costs associated with, with the, with that, that is an option for folks. We're gonna be working through a couple of different scenarios. It sounds like that, that the interest is there for several of them, there's still a couple that are on the fence, though. So we'll be, we're still answering questions. There, we did find out that you have to do an appraisal, so that's probably the biggest hurdle that we need to get done in the next sixty days is getting appraisals done. And then, and then, you know, they're responsible for getting costs of demolition. And some of them have been working towards that, others haven't because they're not as motivated. So I don't know, we might have to get involved to get some, some estimates for people on that kind of stuff, too.
And they pay for the appraisal, each homeowner?
Yes, pay for it. That is reimbursable at the end of all of this. So the ones that move their house, can they get like some reclamation reimbursement for filling in the hole? Yeah, that's all part of it, too, yeah, but just like the demo, you get, you get a percentage of that as well. And, and the, the big news, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, was that the state, you know, FEMA pays 75%. The state's stepping up now and doing an additional 10% on top, so it will be 85% of the appraised value that the homeowner will receive and 85% reimbursement of the costs associated with demo and reclamation.
So they're going off the tax?
No, it's, it's a, it's an appraise, they have to go through an appraisal.
It's not going off the tax?
No. And generally, that's gonna be better for them, because the, the appraised value is, is gonna be generally higher than the, than the tax value.
And that meeting's at six, not five thirty, as it says on the.
Yeah, it's at, yeah, it's at six PM.
And, and C C O G will have two people here, Leslie.
Leslie and Kristen Bennett with C C O G are willing to be assisting with gathering the information, helping to put the applications together. Some of the communication with property owners, since it's kind of a big thing just for, for me to handle, they've stepped in when I called and asked if they could provide some assistance, they've agreed to do that. So we're very thankful that they're stepping up and helping us with that. The, the requirements for, and all the application materials is, it's, each property is very specific and with a lot of details. This meeting, we're hoping to get some initial forms filled out, some signatures in place, you know, providing authorization for us to be proceeding with this, with the, with the property owners, with some, you know, there's privacy rights and those kind of things that property owners need to sign off on before we start digging into some of it. So, we've got, we've got month, or two, two, two and a half months right now to, to pull everything together. Been in communication with the state and they know how many kind of we're looking at and everything, too.
I think this meeting will, you know, make this, the goal of this meeting should be to, to make this process a reality to these people. That, you know, this is what, this is the process and now you're gonna have to start putting your signature on forms and your intent that you want to do it and, and also clearly defining to these people what they have to do and to the extent we can help in that process, you know, we certainly will. But, but, you know, the goal is to get all this done, because they have to be submitted before, by the thirteenth of March.
And I'll emphasize this, too, this is an option for people. City is not pushing, this is completely voluntary. You know, we're providing people with information if they want to participate, is really what, what it is. We're not, we're not being aggressive about telling people, we're just trying to get them information. We sent out a letter and then I called everyone, too, so there's only thirteen, fourteen properties that we're talking about here. So we called and just made sure they knew that this meeting was coming and that they should be at the meeting. If they couldn't be at the meeting, please let us know if we need to be working towards the application. I think that's all my points there, I don't want to hit. January twentieth is Martin Luther King Day, so we'll be meeting on Tuesday the 21st. Also in February, President's Day, that becomes a Tuesday meeting as well, the February eighteenth. Year-end reports are attached, do this every year at the first meeting in January.
Oh, it's second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Should the, February should, should be the nineteenth. Eighteenth is.
The eighteenth Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Move that to Tuesday. Building permit valuations for nineteen was a little bit lower than eighteen. Eighteen was $6,213,466 and nineteen was $4,093.9356. Still very strong year for the community, twelve new homes, four plaques built. You know, the number of homes is down slightly from eighteen, which had seventeen homes. Still a very strong year with twelve homes. Didn't have any of these, any large-scale commercial projects in nineteen, and I think that's probably where you see the difference. You know, the Carstensen construction in eighteen was, was, was a big one that contributed. So, last year, I went on a little bit of a rant and rave about how we needed to secure the next housing development for the community to be able to sustain our growth. And that has happened in, in, in 2019 and we'll be moving in that direction in 2020 and 2021 to see that new site that was annexed into the city two meetings ago. We'll be looking at that, moving in that direction, and so that's a, that's a large relief and something that here at City Hall and, and the council should be happy that that's happened, because that's just crucial to the sustained growth of the community that that has been established. So I consider, I consider that a major accomplishment in nineteen, that we're gonna see that, so we've got that, that next, next phase planned. Sales tax revenues up 5.1% in twenty, from, in, in 2019 from 2018. Total of $55,381 additional. This is just through November, December's numbers will come in in mid-January. As stated before, we had expected kind of a slight decrease in this year and planned for that because of the closing of Shopko Family Dollar. And you didn't see that, so that, that was, we, we kind of got out of those worst-case scenarios. And then we've also seen the exchange of, of, of some of these properties here, Shopko Property going to Dell's Lumber. So we're kind of looking forward to positive growth in that sense and at least seeing that the, the structure is again going to sit empty in what will be an active retail and service site for the community into the future in that, in that retail district that's been established the last seven or eight years. Also, city continuing to work with the Development Corporation with the hopeful sale of additional land. They're still sitting on around forty-plus acres of property down in the Vegan Industrial Park. There has been some inquiries in the, in the last few weeks that the city's been working with, with Doug Hangeon. The Development Corporation has a meeting tomorrow evening, so hopefully we'll see some of that breakthrough in, in 2020 with some potential for some exciting stuff to happen there. So, you know, just looking for future growth in, into the future, it's, the future looks bright as of today, I guess I would say, from, from the economic perspective. With that, just, just a few other things. P and Z hasn't met in several months, Planning and Zoning Commission, their meeting on January 28th. They're gonna be doing their first public hearing on, on a few zoning amendments that we've talked about. They're gonna be doing their first public hearing on, on a few zoning amendments that we've talked about here. So those will be coming up, the council at the first meeting in February. And I'll catch you some of those zoning amendments beforehand, so you have a time, a chance to, to look over those. They're also gonna be doing some of the, some of the rezoning at that meeting. City Hall is working towards some of the implementation of the, of the technology-related items that were budgeted for 2020, the GIS that we approved, I believe, at the last meeting. Purchasing some equipment. We've also gonna be looking at getting this, this room set up and wired and, and ready to go for the, it's wired now, but for some of the camera audio equipment, so that we can start implementing the, the video system here at City Hall and not relying on MAP to, to continue doing that. So we'll have some of those proposals coming towards the council in the, in the next few meetings. Also, gonna hopefully get the campground online. We haven't done that yet. We already get a campground request, so we're working on that here in the next few weeks. But other than that, that's all I have.
I think, you know, it's January 6th and I think in the back of all our minds are what, you know, three months from now, what, what we might be dealing with. And I'm sure that, that, you know, hopefully we do not see large amounts of, of, of snow, rain, you know, but I'm sure we're gonna have to deal with something. And, and also, I think we're planning in February to with DGR to have a meeting with H&amp;W to, about some sort of a detailed plan as how they're going to approach the remainder of this Southeast project, 7th Street, et cetera. I think they, you know, we need to be somewhat aggressive, I guess is, use that word. These contractors have no lack of work to do and we certainly want to make sure that they know how, I, I feel it's, you know, it's critical that we get the Southeast project going and, and, and the approach is a smart approach to how we're gonna do it. So I think that's probably sometime in February, we'll, we'll be doing that and, and making that happen, so. It'll be, yeah, it'll be, next thing you know, it'll be end of March, April. It, it's, the time just flies by anymore. I do know it's less, it's less, just a little over two months to St. Patrick's Day, so that's a good way to gauge things, so. I always do that, so. That's all I've got. And if no one else has any comments.
Move it, John.
Moved by.
Second?
Moved by. Moved by Mark to Jaren and Bob has seconded the motion. All favor, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Thank you.